Good evening, everyone. We're gonna get started. This is a regular scheduled board meeting for Edgewood City Schools. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Gary Gabbert.
Present.
Mr. Andrew Pressler. Mrs. Amy Ashcroft.
How's it?
Mr. Mark Meerschmidt.
Here.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Here.
Would you please stand for the pledge allegiance and remain standing for prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to go ahead and pray. Lord God, we thank you for tonight and we thank you that you're directing our steps and our decisions and that you delight in every single detail and everything that is being pushed forth and done in this school district. God, I thank you for every board member and every person who has poured into our students and their lives. God, as you continue to grow our students and grow our district, God, just be in the midst of everything we do tonight. In your mighty name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Lord. At this time, I'm gonna look for a motion for the approval of the agenda. So moved. Mr. Meerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcroft. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Mark Meerschmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcroft.
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbert.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Next up, we have presentations. Mrs. Bowers, I believe this was for you.
Yeah, if you wanna move down, they'll probably stay down for awards as well. So I'm gonna go and get started. Tonight, we have to do an update of our five-year forecast. We do this in November and then we have to come back and update it in May. I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about what this forecast is. It serves three primary purposes. The first one is so just like we can do right here, right now, we're engaging with the board and the community so that we can discuss long-range planning for financial issues that the district faces. It also serves as what is known as 412 certificate documentation and that is something that I have to sign off on just to show that we have funds available to approve any contracts or whatnot that we agree on. And the third is a method for the Ohio Department of Education as well as the auditor of state to basically see any school district that has any financial issues. This is an overview of our projected financial analysis for just this year. We started the year with eight point two million dollars in our general fund. We anticipate that we will end at about nine point six million. I did wanna share on here that we have a projected gain of one point four million dollars in this current fiscal year. This is the first time since 2019 that we have actually not been in the red, so... You can see a snapshot here of our revenue. Our state funding makes up about fifty-three percent. Local taxes make up thirty-six percent. All other revenue makes up about eleven percent. What goes into that all other revenue? Just wanna put some things out there so you have an idea. Anything that cannot be classified as property tax or state funding goes into this bucket of money, if you will. So things like pay-to-participate fees, interest on our earnings, RIB funding and things of that nature. This is an overview of our projected expenditures. You can see that personnel makes up about seventy-nine percent of our budget. From just a few short years ago, that was about eighty-three percent. So we have, through the process of staff reduction and whatnot, we have been able to lower our personnel costs. And that is the benefits as well, so it's not just for salaries. Purchase services, that's contracts that we enter into. So those are with, like, for example, Warren County, that we have students place their Butler County Educational Service Center for maybe professional development, things that we have to buy. And then finally, you can see there all other expenditures. This is our supplies, capital, and then the operating transfers and advances. This is a snapshot showing you what the expenditures look like in comparison to our cash balance. So that darker blue line, if you look there on the left, that's our revenue. The lighter blue line, that is our expenditures. So you can see there in twenty thirteen, we just barely fell short. We were about a hundred and eighty-nine thousand deficit spending last year. In this current year, as well as next year, I think we're gonna land in the ballpark, one point four million excess revenue over our expenditures this year and about one point three in the following year. Now, from there, the story changes a little bit. In that third year out, we are back to deficit spending again out in twenty-six. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as I go through. But I want you to look on the right side there at the projected cash balance. And this is what happens when you, when your expenditures exceed that revenue. This is our calendar days, cash on hand. You can see back in twenty twenty. Now, I'll remind you, we were not deficit spending in twenty nineteen. And in twenty twenty, we had about ninety-five days cash on hand. You can see here in twenty-four, we're about eighty-five days. That will go up about six days into next fiscal year. So what this is saying is someone, if something would happen right now and we would receive no additional revenue, that's how many days we could operate before we would have to shut down. The GFOA recommends that you do not drop below sixty days cash on hand because that's about how long it takes you to come up with a plan B. So either increasing your revenue or reducing your expenditures. So you can see out there in twenty-seven, that's when we start to see real concern. Historically, and by historically, I mean from years twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, you can see that our average annual revenue change is about one point four four percent. Moving forward, we're expecting about three and a half percent. And then on the far right side, you can see our change in expenditures historically. And again, meaning twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, our expenses were about one point nine five percent and change. And that increases to four point nine percent in the current future year and moving forward throughout the five-year forecast. Again, just an overview here. You can see clearly, our revenue does not keep up with our expenditures. This is a snapshot of our enrollment. I often talk about this mainly because this is the key factor for our state funding. You remember, fifty-three percent of our funding is made up from our state revenue. As our enrollment declines, so does this revenue. I also wanna put this out here that enrollment is declining across the state. The last few weeks, I have said in so many state meetings, county meetings, this is not just here in Edgewood. This is happening across the state. Very few treasurers in the state of Ohio are saying that they're seeing growth in enrollment. You might remember back in November, I had only forecasted a decrease of seven students per year. I did not update that here in this slide, but I will tell you we are trending that it's probably going to fall more than seven. We're gonna take a much deeper dive and look at this when we hit November. But there are some things in the area that may increase our student enrollment, but again, we just don't know. I love that at an econ of seven students per year, just for the time being. This is our per pupil general expenditures. And again, just as we all here have faced inflation at home, the school district is also seeing inflation as well. One of the things that I wanted to mention here, we do try to negotiate contracts and get rates down to keep our per pupil cost down. Some things are just out of our control. Some of our contracts that we're seeing coming in, there, as much as we try to negotiate, we only have so much bargaining that we can do. So again, you see that going up. That is something that we will continue to work on and see how we can improve this in the future. But you can see, it does go up every year. This is an overview of our revenues. And I do wanna point out a couple things here. I tried to make this as big as I could so that you can see it. But if you look at that very first column there, that is fiscal year twenty twenty-three, we have six areas where we receive the funds here at Edgewood. That first line is property tax. You can see in twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, we do see an increase of one point five million dollars there in property tax. A little bit of growth in our public utility, not a whole lot. We were hoping when we filed this back in November, there's some delinquent pocket pipeline monies, hoping that we were gonna get that. That is not gonna be the case. So you'll see that push going out there in the third year where you see five point six nine. We think that our estimated delinquencies are about five hundred and seventy-seven thousand to five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So that's why that's pushed out there in that third year. But if you look back at the property tax again in this current fiscal year, you see we went up about a million and a half. We're gonna continue to build up another million in the next year. What I would like for you to remember, that the school district operates on fiscal years. That's July one to June thirty. So when they came out and did all the property tax reevaluations, which happened in twenty twenty-three, there will be another update in twenty-six, they collect in one year. We did not get that revenue until the following year. So that's why you see some staggering there across our fiscal years. And then we've got one oh, one point oh thirty-five and one oh point forty. That's our state foundation money. We have unrestricted, which we will have to pay benefits and things like that. All of those restricted funds there, the state tells us what we have to do with that. We get for special education, gifted. They basically tell us what to do with those funds. Then if you look on down to one point oh five oh, state share of property taxes, this is property tax dollars, but it comes to us from the state. So if you think of homestead and rollback that people can apply for here in Butler County, we get the funding, but it doesn't come from the county. It comes back from the state. And then that bottom line is all other operating revenue. So you remember, I told you just a few minutes ago, we have six slots that our monies can go in. So again, if it does not classify in one of these other as property tax or state foundation money, it goes in this fiscal year. This is an overview of our expenditures. I missed my header there. On the first column, you can see our personnel and employee. Twenty-three was twenty-two million, twenty-eight thousand. This year is only twenty-two million, three seventy-eight. Again, we've made a lot of cuts and whatnot, so we have done well to keep that where it's at. You can see it does go up a little bit each year. Same thing with our benefits there on that very next line. Ten million, seven thousand last year, ten million, four fifty-seven this current year. And I did on Thursday just get our renewal for our medical premiums. Those are going up eight percent, which is also projected in here. So we'll have that coming up in January. And if you have purchased services, we have really scaled those back. What does that mean? Some of the things that we were gonna have done here, they just weren't done. One example is the striping of our parking lots. We are asking the board to go ahead and approve tonight to stripe our high school parking lot. We're not doing them all. We have pulled that off, if you will. But that parking lot really needs to be restripped. Then you look on down with that supplies and materials. Again, we have really scaled this back. This here in twenty-four was upwards of one point eight or one point nine million, what we projected back in November. We scaled this back. I wanna also point out here, one of the ways we've been able to do this is using grant money. And we paid over three hundred thousand dollars in grant funds for a lot of this new amplified curriculum that we just received. So we were able to scale that back, thankfully for grant money. And then capital outlay, we did not have very much last year. Again, this year, we're very minimal. Things that can go into this would be buses. Now, we opted to use PI money for the one bus that we did get this year. And historically, we have done two buses a year. We are gonna try to do two buses a year moving forward. But also, a lot of our technology, we hit this capital outlays well. So we haven't done it the last two years, but you can see we have needs in the next fiscal year and moving forward. This here is another snapshot down in that forecast. And this is what we always refer to, this six point oh one oh line. That's what we refer to as the over-under. So basically, you take the revenue that you have coming in, reduce your expenditures, and that's what's remaining. You remember, except last year, we were negative a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Again, I do think, barring any major emergencies, we'll end about one point four million in excess revenue this year and then one point three million in the following year. And that third year, we're back again deficit spending. The line right under that, this does not assume cash levy or any levies. So this is our cash balance. You'll remember, I told you, we worked eight point two million at the beginning of the year. You can see this moving forward. By the end of twenty-eight, based on only what's built in here right now, our cash balance drops to three point five million dollars. I can tell you especially like this last payroll that we just ran was a million dollars. We had another payroll last month. That was a million dollars. Just to put it into perspective, that, you know, we have to keep an eye on this cash balance. And then again, that's to start the year. That bottom line is what that fiscal year looks like as of June thirtieth. At this screen here, you just heard me say a few minutes ago that I have to be able to certify. So if we go into any contracts with anybody, with our bargaining units, some of these that we have for facility maintenance, you have to be able to certify that you can pay for those. So you can see here going into twenty-five, I have ten, about ten million dollars that I can appropriate toward that, nine million the year after. And then in that third year there, we drop down to that three million. Again, this does not assume any additional revenue. So take a look, if you will, at that middle line there. Out in twenty twenty-six, that one point four million dollars, that is being reduced from our budget because we do have an expiring levy. Again, think about calendar years and fiscal years. So we would lose half in that fiscal year. And then in twenty-seven, we would lose the whole amount, which is closer there to three million dollars, as well as in twenty-eight. And here, this is just to go back and just show you a snapshot. So when the forecast was filed back in November, our current total revenue over what we projected back in November, keep in mind, we had no idea where they were gonna land with property tax. We have the fair state funding plan that was going on. So we didn't know exactly what our revenue was going to be at that time. We have now added eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars into our budget based on those, which is about one point nine percent. Our expenditures are minus eleven thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, less than a percent. So you can see, we are, based on a forty million dollar budget, we are very well on the mark here of where we thought we were gonna be back in November. And this is just that snapshot I was showing you again. You can see all the way back to twenty nineteen. That was the last year where we were operating in the black there. Where our total revenues are is the dark line. The expenditures are that light gray line. If you look all the way out there, where you can see the last three columns, the salmon color or peach, if you will, that's that amount of revenue that we are losing because of the expiring levy. And then that bright yellow line that goes across, that just shows you what this cash balance is. And it does not include encumbrances and things that we have in there, but... That's a snapshot of it. So you can see the direction that we're headed here. And I just, I appreciate your time. If you have any questions, I'm very happy to take them. Yes, sir.
So you were talking about the, you're talking about that emergency five-year operating levy falling off. That falls off in twenty-six, right? Is that, is that basically the difference that's making us deficit spend in FY twenty-six?
So you can see here that we're deficit by one point eight. So we're deficit spending a little more than what that is actually gonna cover. That, that wouldn't be enough to make us whole. We'll get more into this later. There are additional needs as well that we see that are not forecasted here. And by that, it's state mandates and things for professional development. We do anticipate that we are going to have to add a few more staff. And we'll get more into that later as we look at what those needs are for the future. But that would not be enough to fix the deficit.
So another question, Patty. So we, you're saying that school districts operate on fiscal years versus calendar years? I'm assuming these numbers are all fiscal year, not tax year. So technically, if I'm reading this right, July of next year is when we start deficit spending, correct?
It is actually, yeah, July of twenty-five because that is our fiscal year twenty-six.
It's coming up fast.
Yes, ma'am. You have a projection of decreased enrollment for three years. Was that part of the calculation in your deficits of saying that we're not gonna get as much money from the state?
Yes, but I kept that just seven students less.
But you have a big drop from twenty-three to twenty-four. Is that a fact, that we're dropping that much from twenty-three to twenty-four? Is that what we have done this year?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so then you've leveled it out more or less.
Yes.
So we're not taking account that we could grow at all?
No. And the key with the seven there, I don't know which direction that we will land. I would love to see more students come in. But we don't have vouchers and homeschool. There are just so many options out there.
And that's what the other districts are reporting out across the state is homeschool and voucher?
Yes, I was actually in Cincinnati with a group of about fifty treasurers down there. There was not one treasurer in that room that said they are experiencing growth. Heard the same up at OASBO in Columbus last month. Same thing. There were maybe two treasurers that I'd heard that were actually claiming that they were experiencing growth. I do think a lot of this has to do with the vouchers. We know here, we've seen our own homeschool enrollment go up. And I've said before, I don't know that we fully recovered from the COVID. So we could get more of those students back as well. There are just so many unknowns. I often talk with Mr. Gabbert that beyond that third year out, there's so much that can happen. We've had a lot of issues even in the last month. A lot of you heard us talk about that elevator, which is a huge expense. We've had a couple major issues with water in a couple of the buildings. It's just, you can't plan for every little thing because... Yes, sir.
If you don't know this, this is okay because this isn't actually part of your presentation. But the bond levy that we put in to build the high school, that, in my understanding, that falls off in the next several years. Is that, is that still the case?
Yes.
Do we know what the millage was on that?
I can hook it up. I don't have that.
Okay.
Both of them combined were just a little north of five mills.
So if you're a taxpayer in this district, you're gonna see a reduction in property tax based off of that bond levy falling off to build the high school. And then if we don't renew the emergency operating levy, there's also, there's also a change in your property taxes based off of that as well, correct?
Yes. I believe the other bond falls off before the high school.
To put it in perspective, what is a mill?
A mill for us would be about six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars.
Thank you very much. Very informative.
Any questions, please call.
Thank you, Patty. That was very nice. Now, we'll call Lisa Beckett to the podium. And she has some wonderful celebrations to share with everyone in regard to special awards and retirements. And I think there's a few other special recognitions.
I appreciate my helpers this evening. Well, tonight's a special night. We are here to honor some of the difference makers in this district. Former post-lady Roslyn Carter said, "Do what you can to show you care about other people and you will make the world a better place." When I looked, when I started to see people come in tonight that just spoke to me so strongly, what a group of people who make a difference every single day in this school district. And I just can't say enough about what it means to me to see you all here tonight. We're gonna start out tonight by honoring our retirees. These are people who have dedicated their professional life to the Edgewood Stevens, but more than that, to the staff and the community. You are forever a part of the Edgewood family. So when I call your name, if you'd come up.
This remains standing.
Absolutely. Let's begin with Melissa Brown, Edgewood High School. She could not join us tonight. Robin Compton from Transportation. Rose Harvey from Edgewood High School.
The uncomfortable moment.
David Jewell from Food Service. Daddy Goss, with the President's Office.
David, you can stay right there, buddy.
Okay, thank you.
There you go. Thank you. Congratulations.
Arlene Urbanyan from Transportation. James Ome, Edgewood Middle School. Diana Scrabney from Edgewood Elementary.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We have everybody on the sub-list, right, for next year? And applications in your bag. That's what it is.
You can have a bag.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Exceptional attendance. Last year we honored twenty-one employees. This year we have thirty-nine employees. So, so that gives me hope that, that COVID is, is behind us more than ever. So if you have a name, if you'd please come up, we'd appreciate that. We'll start with Mr. Doug Epler, Edward Middle School. Bob Hawkins, Edward Middle School. Mary Hillary, Edward Elementary.
Congratulations.
You just don't let each other stay home. That's great. That's awesome.
Bethany Johnson, Transportation. Scott McDaniel, Transportation. Kevin McDonald, Edward Middle School. Therese Edwards Ogleton, Edward High School. Darren Steiner, Edward.
Congratulations. Well, let's give our per- I, I don't even have perfect attendance. I just want to thank you. But look, our transportation department cafeteria bringing it home. Thank you very much.
You know, I just want to say how much we appreciate all of our staff. But often our teachers get a lot more recognition than our O C staff. And I've been meaning to tell a secretary this, but one of our students says there's plenty of days he or she doesn't want to get out of the car. But when they see the secretary's beautiful, positive face, it makes them dimly. Is that not amazing? So let's thank all of our people. I think about that with our bus drivers. Our teachers often hear these things because they're with the kids more most of the time. But uh, we probably don't, don't thank our people enough. Next, we will bring up our exceptional attendance friends. We'll start with Melissa Allen, Edward High School. Kim Barry, Mr. Campoli. Mark Porter, Edward High School. Patty Bowers, Mr. Campoli. John Caesar, Edward High School. Robert Chastain, Edward Primary School. Here comes another G. Scott Lemons.
Congratulations, sir. Congratulations.
Crystal Colgate William, Edward Middle School. Amanda Garner, District. Jager, Transportation. Henry Hall, Edward Primary. Lana Heller, Transportation. Logan Hoskins, Edward Primary School. Kevin Johnson, Edward High School. Angela McHenry, Edward Primary School. Chris Forty, Edward High School. Ian Crash, Edward Early Childhood Center. Melissa Lawson, Edward High School. Maggie Mee, Edward Middle School. Jeanne Pence, Edward High School. Tracy Phillips, Edward High School. Matt Moon, Edward High School. Toby Schmidt, Edward Primary School. Jason Singleton, Edward Early Childhood Center. Mary Jane Slaton, Transportation. Susan Price, Edward Intermediate School. Finally, we would like to, to honor some other people.
Congratulations.
We'll do that as well. Do we have the pictures?
Yeah, because it's a long road.
At this time, if we could have, have Mr. John Arnold come forward, please. Mr. Arnold, what a pleasure he is. He received the Ohio Music Education Association, twenty-five years of service. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Patty Bowers, the Ohio Auditor of State Awards for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Congratulations. And the man, the man who's in this rough voice from the auditor's office and I hear from Mrs. Bowers. He went on to say, "With thirteen percent of treasurers across the state of Ohio, we want that."
That's impressive.
Carol Lamboli, Butler County Electric Grant for Summer Literacy.
Congratulations. Oh, no, we're not going to let you get away with that.
Teresa Bowyer, Butler County Electric Grant for Summer Literacy. Edward Early Childhood Center, the Ohio Department of Education Purple Star School.
Congratulations, Sister Grace.
Edgewood Middle School, National Association of Music Merchant Merit in Music Education. And we're going to have, we're going to have the Fields come up as well at this time because they are.
It is a family affair. I love it. Come on now.
And who do we have with you this evening?
Clara.
Clara? Congratulations, Clara. We also have Nick Fields, Yamaha Forty Under Forty Award. Also received the Yamaha Forty Under Forty Award. We also have Edward Primary School, Ohio Department of Education Purple Star School. And we have a student who also received this special award. Miss Emily Graham received the G R A Award, Outstanding Achievement Award. We have Ms. Halsey, Jenny Halsey received the Greater Cincinnati Foundation Learning Links Grant. The Butler School Electric Grant for Summer Literacy. We have Jessie Lam. She received an Innovative Teaching Grant from Butler County E S C. Jen Small received the Franklin D Walker Outstanding Educator Award. Emily Hill, we honor you for the work that you do with military families in this district and for every, everything that you do to bring awareness and support to our families. And Libby Wolf. Libby has had twenty-one years of musical excellence for the district and thirteen years as the Director of Core Leaders. And we couldn't let this evening go by without recognizing you for all that you've done and all that you've done for us.
And we're not going to make you talk because we know that's.
All right, we're going to take a restroom break real quick. Uh, whoever needs to go, needs to go. So uh, uh, how exciting, how exciting was it, I mean, to have all the great people? Congratulations to all the people that got to retire. Um, I mean, just have so many good people in the building tonight. We appreciate everything you've done for Edgewood Schools. That being said, we'll uh, give it a few minutes here and we'll return. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started again. We're going to reconvene here. Um, Mr. Andrew Pressler joined the meeting at six nineteen with us. Next, next we have public participation. And I have one person signed up, Nicole Green. Would you please state your name and address and the reason that you're here, please?
I can just start reading. I have it all here.
That's fine. You got to tell us your name and address though.
Yep. Hello, my name is Nicole Green. I reside at eight zero six Trenton Road. I'm a lifelong resident of the district, parent of a third-generation Edgewood student, granddaughter of a former Edgewood staff member and graduate of Edgewood City Schools. I emailed the board on April twenty-sixth, and I'm here today to speak in person on a policy revision suggestion for P O eight one two zero Volunteers and Disqualifying Offenses under the background check requirement. I won't go into too much detail given my time and strength, but with a broad comparison to the Admin Guideline manual under A G three one two zero E, Appointment of Person Convicted of a Crime. A candidate for employment who has also been convicted of a crime may be employed only if all of her following conditions exist. One, the offense is a misdemeanor. No former felon is ever eligible. Two, the victim was not under eighteen years of age. Three, at least five years have passed since the candidate was fully discharged from imprisonment or probation or had their conviction sealed. Four, the candidate provides written confirmation from a court or counselor that they have been rehabilitated. And five, the candidate's employment will not jeopardize in any way the health, safety, or well-being of fellow staff members, students, the administration, or parents and visitors. There are also other factors listed in the Admin Guideline that are considered prior to making an intimate decision to look at the full scope of the offense in more detail. The language in the current volunteer policy gives no consideration to the nuanced details of someone's criminal history, except for a drug offense that is not a minor misdemeanor and a drug possession offense that is not a minor drug possession offense. These offenses do not automatically disqualify a potential volunteer if they are minor misdemeanor offenses. Yet the disqualifying offensive theft leaves no room for considering the severity of the crime. The current language disqualifies a person who could be a valuable volunteer or asset to the district. It discriminates against mistakes that may have been committed as a young adult that since been atoned for and not repeated. It also doesn't consider how much time has elapsed since the offense or if the record has been sealed. I urge the board to consider reviewing the volunteer policy with more thoughtfulness and also consider that the guidelines for hiring a full-time staff member understands that someone's path isn't so black and white, and more considerations need to be included in the volunteer policy. A prospective volunteer can need or exceed these considerations in the Admin Guideline and in theory, work as an employee for the district, but not qualify as a volunteer who freely gets the time, effort, and experience to serve our students. I want to thank the boards for the work they do for our students and the district. And for the time I was allowed to speak here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Is that policy, Kelly? That's something that, that is directed to us by legal or is that, is, do we have some?
It's directed to us by the legal advisor in our, in Niola, which we contract with to keep us updated with new legislation, law, and, and compliance. It's also been advised by our attorney that we have on contract.
So this is a, that policy is generated through Niola who writes policy?
Aligning with our advice code and law.
So this is, that policy would be consistent across all districts in the state of Ohio?
That's the way I understand it, correct. Because we've talked to our attorney personally on this piece. Um, this isn't the first time this has come up. And she, of course, she's going to err on the side of being cautious. And she says you don't want to put yourself in the state of vetting who's in, who's out. You need to go by, by law. But if you're interested, we can always bring her in and you can ask her personal questions and reevaluate that.
I, I personally knew people that have been disqualified for this or that. But personally, I, you know, I'm looking at it. I don't really consider them to be a risk. So I, I do think there's a possible opportunity to, to discuss this a little deeper.
We can bring legal counsel in next meeting.
Well, I guess that's up to the board. If the board is willing to have, I, I don't want to be the one that drives the conversation. But I, I would be willing to, to revisit that policy. If we did that, how, how would we, how would we be able to screen? I mean, with, with the way we screen now? Well, I think the point that she was making is that there's no consideration for the severity of the offense.
Or if it's been expunged.
Or if it's been expunged. And there's no consideration for the time. I, I know somebody personally in this district.
I, I know somebody personally in this district that wanted to volunteer but was involved in something when they, thirty-five years ago, when they were eighteen years old, that has disqualified them, and in my opinion, it was a pretty minor situation. But because of what happened to them thirty-five years ago, they can not participate in anything that, that the district does.
Do you know if it was expunged off the record?
It was not. Okay. It was a, it was a, I, I guess the point of me is it was the, it's not that it was expunged, it's just the time that has passed since the offense and this person's went on to do really good things. So I just, I, I don't know how you screen it, I don't know, I don't know how you, I don't know how you put the criteria out there. But I, I do think that there might be something better than what we currently have, that might be worth taking a look at. Because I do think we are eliminating some really good people in our community that would probably be interested in volunteering based off of the wording of that particular policy. Now, at the same time, if this is a statewide and it's, you know, then I don't know if that's something I wanna take on. But if the board had an appetite, I certainly would have an appetite to discuss it deeper.
Well, I understand what Mark's saying, but also the thing that would concern me with it is as soon as you approve or change something like that, if something was to happen, now the monkey's on your back. You know, you're the one who, regardless if that's the reason why it happened, uh, you know, to the community and everybody out there, is, you know, you're gonna be the one who changed that, that allowed that to happen. So, 'cause everybody's always looking to point fingers. And that would be the hard part for me is saying, hey, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm willing to take on that responsibility to do something like that, that'd be tough.
I, I agree with you. How we work around this is we just don't have them be a volunteer. When it's situations that was just described, we allow them just to participate, but not in the capacity of a volunteer. So it's not that people are being excluded, there are workarounds. But I will tell you, I wouldn't wanna be the gatekeeper. You would have some people that actually have, um, it, it, it could be some other cases that you don't want to ignore, even if it's a time period or not. I wouldn't wanna be that gatekeeper, but if the board, you own policy. If you wanna revisit this, I would say let's bring the attorney in, reevaluate it, and then I would put the onus back on the board to vet them. If it's going against...
I wouldn't mind listening as an attorney, but I'd like to hear what she has to say. I mean, I'm sure she's probably gonna be on the, you know, call school.
Should we adopt this policy to govern our P W S board background check if they use the policy?
This, this policy's been in existence since twenty... It's been in existence forever, the last time it was updated was twenty seventeen. However, we did update our procedures to include this for people that supervise kids on our school grounds.
Oh, yeah. Well, I think the, the biggest thing is if it's not black and white, if we're in a gray area on this, I, I think we're threatened. It's dangerous. But I mean, I, I have no problem bringing it.
The only thing I don't wanna get into is I, I, you know, approving people on an individual basis to where it depends on who's sitting up here, who gets to volunteer and who doesn't get to volunteer.
And I agree with that, I, I don't think we wanna make it a gray area, but I, I think maybe what I'm suggesting is maybe look at the language.
The understanding of the language and why it's there. Yep, absolutely. No doubt.
We can do that.
Next up, we have treasure items. Mrs. Bowers, would you like to start?
Yes, sir, and I will try to be quick here. So the first agenda item, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the board minutes from April twenty-second.
Looking for a motion to approve the board minutes from April twenty-second.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler, Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gather?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. And next, I would like to block the agenda items B, C, and D and ask for a motion to approve all three.
Looking for a motion to approve B, C, and D, which would be the April financial reports, amounts, and rates in the five-year forecast.
Seven.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Messerschmidt, Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gather?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
That motion carries five zero.
I'm sorry, if there was a discussion, please stop, like, if you got a question about one of these things. I, I, the one question I had is I, I didn't completely understand the inside ten mil and outside ten mil, I, I don't understand what that means.
So every year the county sets the rates for the taxes that they're gonna collect. Um, typically, we get this from Mike Stein in March, I actually just got this from him last week. Um, but they send us, it's just to set the rates for the taxes they collect. So, for example, out there, you can see that substitute levy, uh, it used to be five point six four, so they don't collect. Uh, as the taxes go up, this millage is gonna come down. Same thing with our bonds there, we actually just paid off one of the bonds in December. Um, we have issue fifteen, that one will fall off in December of twenty-five. Issue thirteen falls off in twenty-six, so they basically adjust these rates. So in October of every year, we send them our debt schedule, they set the rates of the amount they need to collect in order to make our bond payments.
So this is one hundred percent generated by accounting?
Yes.
Correct. I still don't know if I completely understand it, but, but, honestly, I don't know that I will understand, so it was a sleepover. That was scary.
Pretty scary.
We did call that.
Okay, I'm sorry, please continue.
Okay, uh, next, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the Food Service Compliance Consulting Agreement.
Looking for a motion to approve the Food, Food Service Compliance Consulting Agreement.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler, Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
We're waiting discussion.
Waiting discussion.
Can you just tell us, like, what, like, what prompted this?
Um, so you might have heard me mention before where I was working with the E P C. As you all know, Mr. David Joyce retiring this year, we are not backfilling that position. Um, I have worked with the E P C all this last year, I've actually invited Ms. Adams in with me. Um, and we're gonna try to make this go here with the two of us. So, uh, basically, the E P C will file all of our state reports, deal with the audits, just make sure that we are maintaining compliance. Um, but again, we're not backfilling this position, so...
So is this a single person that's coming in, or is this a service?
No, it's E P C, we do a lot with them, um, we get busted through E P C, they manage all of our insurance. Um, they do a lot of different things for us.
So they're gonna do the administrative portion of managing food, is that what I'm...
No, it's just to keep us compliant, so we're gonna maintain operations here in the district. What they will do is work with the auditors when they come in and do audits.
They'll help us with vendors to secure cheaper food rates?
So I actually had that approved last year, that we're gonna try to use a, a new vendor next year, but there was a one-year waiting list. Um, so we've got that in the works. Um, we do those, uh, profit-loss analysis that you've heard me talking about.
They're gonna help us with menu planning?
Yes.
And vendor.
So, so this is helping us to absorb some of the additional work that we have taken on based off of personnel cuts and not backfilling?
Correct.
But the administrative will ha- happen at Central Office, the administrative part.
So, so we still...
It's getting absorbed.
And I'm assuming that's getting absorbed?
There's several of us.
Okay.
Go team.
So this is a cost, this is driven for cost savings?
Yes, it's gonna be under the Director of Health and Safety. However, there's gonna be several of us that have our hands on it, including Patty and I.
Correct.
So are any of these responsibilities, uh, it says outlined the district has, are those needed responsibilities, or these are things, or these are normal? Okay.
I know, I know that the E P C, uh, got us a lot better rate when we was buying two buses a year. They negotiate that price down because they probably work with a hundred school districts and they'll buy three hundred buses at one time.
So let's just say we're buying a food item, they work with this so much, they're gonna say you wanna purchase this particular item through this vendor, not this vendor, just because they have such a great knowledge base and understanding. Where we might continue to buy with a vendor or two that we're comfortable with, that we may not be getting the best price.
But the, the, the quality and the, the type of menu items that we're gonna have is still gonna, because we, we have...
They have to meet standard by the standards.
We have some pretty good cafeterias and, and that quality of the food and things like that, that's not gonna change, right?
No, no. Matter of fact, they will help us with our website, so a parent can actually get on an icon that says pizza day or whatever, and it's in list, we're having apples and milk or whatever, you can click on the icon and it'll tell you exactly the nutrition standards in each of the items.
Alicia, I actually sat with her and looked at some of the menus, and it's, Talalonda's doing this, a lot of districts are. And it, it has proven to be very successful in these districts, but I didn't think the menu looked bad at all, I mean, I mean, I would be enticed to go to the school and get a lunch, I mean...
It's helped districts with cost savings and bringing the, the spending down.
So, some of these kids may only get really good meals while they're up here, and I certainly don't wanna see us take that away, right? So, sound, if I'm hearing you correctly, that won't change, it'll still be the same?
That is not the goal. That is not the goal.
One of the things that came out of this, um, we know our, our labor costs in food service, and you can see on the front balances there if you look in, um, those financial reports. I'm wanting to say at the end of April, food service was maybe like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars deficit. Um, this is not a new thing, we've been dealing with this, and we have to get this turned around. Um, we say that the food service is their own operation, but at the end of the day, when it comes June and we go to close out, guess who gets to move that money and pay that, because you cannot close that out negative. General fund has to cover that. Now, we always push it back out, but we have to do that to close out at the end of the year. We have to get this turned around, and the Greek Avenue that I wrote back, this to me looks like the way to do it. A lot of districts right here close to us have been very successful in this, so we wanna give it a go. I've looked at the menu options, um, we work very closely with them, and we feel like we have a good opportunity to turn this around.
Mark, I was part of this at Talalonda, and we did not have substandard food. That was never a complaint.
And, and that's the only concern I have, is it, is I don't wanna lose control of it, and I think that's really like a building principle, you know, to kinda keep an eye on that, if it looks like we're, we're not consistent with where we've been, you know, historically, traditionally, then maybe get involved in it and kinda start changing some, some of the things that they're doing.
Yeah, so like I was saying, our, our labor is right in line, but we do think we can do better with food costs.
Correct. Thank you for that, all the information.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gather?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Uh, next, I would like to block items F and G, these are service contracts for students.
Looking for a motion to contract to, to block F and G, um, Butler County E S C Service Agreement and Behavior Service Contract.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft, any discussion?
Well, yeah, I have a question on this Applied Behavior Services Contract. Are, are we stuck with them, or is there options for that? I mean, kids, like, you look at how much these are for three students.
Mrs. White, would you like to speak?
Kind of, right, so I will tell you, I met with, I found, I'm saying this out loud, um, but I met with their, their financial team at E I S, um, because their rates are going up every single year. Uh, they actually gave us a discount last year, and they're gonna give us a discount this year, because we have such a long-standing relationship with them. Uh, those services are for three-student-specific educational placements, they're for students who need, uh, it's a two-on-one placement, two students to one adult, so it is very intensive. Um, there are other placements out there that we should look at, but they're not a full A B A base, and they're often re-placed. So while students are there, I would say, yeah, kind of, um, we always look at that, we have two meetings every, every year where we talk about those things. Um, but these are students that I very strongly feel need these specific places and need consistency. Um, and there aren't any kind of other options for me.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gather?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Uh, next, I would like to block items H, I, and J.
Looking for a motion to approve H, I, and J, which would be the striping of the parking lot and, uh, two plumbing issues that was...
Seven.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt, any discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll?
I had a question.
Hold on.
One of them, there's actually a warranty, six-year warranty on the tank, eight-year on the, eight years on the heat exchange, and five-year on parts, and then the other one, there's no warranty on that. I was wondering if they both...
Those from two different companies, correct?
Yeah, but it's for two different buildings.
Yeah, I didn't understand that this was two different buildings. The one is for E I S for a tank that's leaking, and the other one, the electrical plumbing issue at the middle school that was specific to the cafeteria, correct?
Yes, and Mrs. Adams, would you like to speak to these issues?
Yeah, so we got quotes for, um, both issues that happened, which were coincidentally, simultaneously, like, at the same time, six of our buildings. Um, we got quotes for them from a couple of different plumbers. The middle school turned into a little bit more of an emergency situation, um, due to this, we need hot water, um, in the building. So we, we went with, we had three quotes at that point, we had to get that taken care of. So we got that taken care of in about a forty-eight hour timeframe. Um, and then compared the quotes for the E I S, that tank is leaking, but it's not an emergency situation, that's something we're gonna look next week when we don't have students in the building anymore to get that taken care of. So we just, we went with the quotes that we had, one we had to handle in more of an emergency fashion, and then the other one, we had a little bit more time to...
So we fixed that in forty-eight hours?
It was over the course of like a Wednesday to Friday, yeah.
So, so we had to move, but we were washing dishes from the middle school at E I S, is that correct, for other cafeterias? So that was only a couple of days that we did that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, the, the E I S quote doesn't have any kind of warranty with it, or does it just not on there?
It's not, it's not on there, I mean, I don't, I don't know specifically, um, what a warranty is on that, but I can, I will look into it. She does a lot of our plumbing...
I recognize the name, it's Linda Doudak, and she does, she's been around here for years.
Yeah.
Or, um, even, even her father was here, does, totally work here. More questions?
I would just like to add that that was like nine thousand dollars less than the next quote up as well, so...
I was gonna say that, it seems...
Yeah.
So, so the work is not done at E I S, correct?
I, honestly, I didn't really hear anything about it yet, so just the last day or so, I didn't even know there was a problem over there, so...
It's, it's not urgent, I mean, it is, it's a water-holding tank that is leaking, I mean, it's, it's leaking kind of down under the wall, but it's not an, an emergency situation like the one at E I S at the middle school was.
Mrs. Bowers, do you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gather?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
That motion carries five zero. Uh, the next agenda item is the F Y twenty-five Student Fee Schedule.
Looking for a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five student fee schedule.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft? It's pretty much the same as last year?
Yes, minus, um, some online things that, that were paying in house and that qualify for re-rate reimbursement.
Any discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gather?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item, I would like to ask for a motion to approve a new fund for a safety grant.
Looking for a motion for the approval of a new fund for a safety grant. Mr. Michael Pressler, do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Messerschmidt? Does that mean this has to be used this year?
It does not, we actually just got it, I'm waiting to hear back from the Attorney General. What we think this grant is, is a grant that was applied for a backup generator at the middle school. Um, but we're still waiting to hear if that's the grant that we got.
So it has to be used for something specific?
Oh, yes, they're very specific.
According to how you wrote the grant.
Doesn't all our communications and stuff generate from the middle school?
Yes, well, it's how... Yes, well, it's housed.
Well, yeah, so if the middle school loses power, everything in the district is affected because of it.
Correct.
So that's why it's critical we don't lose power in the middle school.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next, I would like to block items M and N and ask for approval of these donations.
Looking for a motion to approve the two separate donations.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler? Any discussion?
Nope.
Mrs. Bowers, whoever donated it? Yes, thank you very much. Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowers. Mrs. Spiege?
Yes, I'd like to propose grouping items six A and B. This includes two overnight trips, one for the high school girls' basketball camp to Transylvania University and the second, just here in Hamilton, overnight for high school cheer camp. Item B is standard, the middle school student handbook approval.
We'll look for a motion to approve items A and B, which would be two separate field trips and the middle school handbook.
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Messerschmidt? Discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next item is item six C, approval of a proposed preschool calendar. I'd like to share with the board, this is different than our K-12 calendar. We've been meeting with the preschool team over the course of the year. Oh, sorry, we need to...
Can I get a motion for the preschool proposed revised calendar? So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Too much caffeine today, sorry. We've been meeting with the preschool team and we are one, or there may be two districts in Butler County that are in a five-day program. When we moved to a five-day program, we were not thinking of all the additional professional development needed for licensure requirement through the state of Ohio. As well as preschool certainly houses a lot of IEP students, just the transitional meetings as well as the IEP meetings. So after several opportunities, you will see the calendars proposed for a hundred and sixty-four student days. When I first saw that, I was like, what do we mean, a hundred and sixty-four? But if you look at the other schools that have a four-day program, they're going even less than that. And I really would like to support the preschool team in order that we are a hundred percent compliant with our standards, licensure training, as well as they have to participate in all the rest of the district training too, to meet these requirements.
So we're looking from, what, a hundred and eighty-two days to a hundred and sixty-four days?
Well, the other, we're looking at, we have a hundred and seventy-six days for K-12. We're looking at a hundred and sixty-four days for preschool. If they were a four-day program like every other program in Butler County, they would be even less than a hundred and sixty-four days. This is about two days a month for training to make us compliant for licensure, IEP, and transitional meetings.
So the additional work that they have because of all the IEPs, are they, they'll be able to do that type of stuff on these days, is that...
Yes, as a matter of fact, they have provided me with a detailed list of exactly what would be done on each of those days to meet those requirements.
Does this need to be negotiated through the year?
I've been told no. Sandy, would you like to speak to Mark?
I don't think so.
So is a hundred and...
You don't think so, you wanna speak or you don't think so? Please do a five-minute presentation right now.
We have a hundred and eighty-three teacher days, we have a hundred and seventy-six student days. This still keeps the teacher days exactly the same. It takes the preschool team twelve more, his and twelve more professional development days to meet the licensure requirements and needs for preschool. It still would be more...
Correct.
Correct, and if we were a four-day program like the others in the county, they would have even less than a hundred and sixty-four student days.
So I don't, I don't think that's probably quite enough, but is that, it seems like that's a compromise to where...
That is a compromise to a four-day schedule, which would need to be, that would need to be negotiated with contract language. All, everybody was like, four days a week. Yep.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
That motion carries five zero.
Okay, for superintendent items, I would like to share the most recent Butler Tech update with the board. Mr. Tom Work was here earlier and when he learned how late he would be in the presentation, he decided to go have dinner with Laura. But he did want us to know that in this newsletter, you will see that Butler Tech has their first student in bioscience actually achieve a perfect score on the ACT. That's not easy, so we certainly would like to congratulate Butler Tech and more specifically their student that performed this perfect score. Also...
Do we know what kind of scholarships or anything that she's getting or is there any information on that?
I'm sure there's information in here, the fact that she's attending biohealth tells me she has a medical future and I'm sure that she's getting scholarships through that. Typically, when you get a perfect score on an ACT, you have all kinds of offers coming forward.
I've imagined it.
And if this hadn't, if I hadn't received this two minutes before the meeting, I wouldn't have read that and I could answer that one, it's probably on there. Now I wanna find that answer, but I'm confident she has several. Also, Butler Tech graduated six hundred and seventy seniors on May fifteenth and they are getting all kinds of accolades for what they're doing and expanding their program and to see that they are servicing six hundred and seventy students in Butler County is impressive for seniors that wanna try a little different track. So we'd like to send some love their way. And we did acknowledge several staff members tonight, so I want to thank all of them for being here today and certainly sharing their talents with us. Something that I would like to say is that Aiden Moon, seventh grader at Edgewood Middle School, received a Read On Award, which is an Ohio Award, and he was nominated by the school media center, Rachel White. So you will see that in the superintendent's top five news. So that's always fun to get state awards and be recognized for that. Would like to also do, give a shout out, I don't know who attended the musical a few weeks ago, but Brittany McClellan, a teacher who produced Little Women, I'm telling you, I have goosebumps just talking to you about it. I felt like I was in on a Broadway performance. The fact that we had the orchestra there and our students were just on point, it was quite a delight to see. And I'll tell you what, I sat there and it just, I don't know why it hit me, but just the fine arts in Edgewood is over the top. I've put this up against anyone, it's just very impressive. So I wanna give a shout out to fine arts, but specifically Brittany McClellan, who's due any day and the time she put into such a tremendous production was great. Another piece is I just wanna acknowledge all of our principals who are doing clap-out awards. Our students just feel so special when they get to leave and be clapped out or they entered in a particular grade and they're leaving and to watch them strut down our hallways is fun. So if you haven't gotten an opportunity to attend one, you may wanna do so. And then another shout out to Mr. Phil Pot. I know the last meeting we talked about all of the donations we've received in the district. It was over thirty thousand dollars just from Miami Valley Career Technical with furniture and different items. And listening to the grants written that were honored tonight, that's, that's alternative revenue coming into our school district. So the thousands of dollars and the time involved behind that, I just wanna say thank you to our staff members that certainly reach out and put in that extra work. And just the graduation yesterday, hey, although it was hot, I have to tell you, I thought it was awesome. And our valedictorian talked about the importance of gratitude. And so we always do a check-in when we meet as administrators, so I said, okay, we're gonna do something, take a negative and turn it into a positive with your gratitude. But I thought all the speeches were outstanding and I can say, although it was a hot day yesterday, watching our families participate and seeing our students on our own turf, the number of scholarships, and I have to tell you, I've never been part of a ceremony where so much scripture was shared. And that sets Edgewood apart from many others. So very proud of our staff and students, so just wanna do a shout out to everybody that attended and to all of our three hundred, maybe it was three hundred and one graduates.
Thank you, Mrs. Spiege. Next up, we have items for board members. Mr. Messerschmidt, would you like to start?
Yes, sir, I got a couple of things. Had an opportunity to go to the middle school a few weeks ago with my daughter for the, for the awards ceremony that they do recognizing kids in all the different grade levels and they do their, they do their chorus concerts and then they have the art fair. And I'll tell you, that was just a really cool thing to be a part of, a lot of really good work that's going on, a lot of kids doing some really amazing things. And Kelly, you just talked about it, about the arts being alive. Well, actually Carmen was talking about that on stage and she made the comment about how strong our arts are. If you were at that, if you were in there that week of that going on at the middle school, you would, you would agree, some really good things. We've got John here tonight, we recognized really all of our, all of our music teachers, our good majority of our music and teachers, band directors and things like that, and then just seeing what they did in the middle school, it was really an impressive thing to see. Also, got a lot of really good feedback on the DC trip. I heard that was a really cool trip, I heard it was exhausting because it's non-stop, but I heard it was a really good trip and a lot of, a lot of kids and folks that got to go really enjoyed that. So I just think that's a really cool thing that we're able to do. And then I just wanted to echo the last thing is, you know, the administration, the staff, the high school, just everything that went into that graduation ceremony yesterday. You know, you talk about, you were talking about, you know, the speeches and stuff. I personally know very well quite a few of the students that graduated yesterday and that's a super impressive class that walked across that stage. Just, I was talking to Mr. Banks out in the lobby and that was, there was some, there were some really impressive young people that walked across the stage and I think, think if I remember correctly, one point eight million dollars in scholarships. You know, so just great, you know, we don't always take the time to recognize all the great things that are going on, but if you think that there's not really good stuff going on in this district, you needed to do that graduation yesterday and you saw this is a really impressive district and our students are, I'd put them against anybody because they do really good things.
Thank you.
I wonder if you can tell by my sunburn, but I was at the graduation. So I gotta, I gotta look at my glasses.
Thank you, Mr. Messerschmidt. Mr. Michael Pressler?
Oh, I think so.
Thank you. Mrs. Ashcraft?
Thank you. I just wanna give a shout out to Rocky Chastain, the DECA teacher. Usually, you know, I'm all of a faith, but now it's like DECA because they did All Champions Day a couple of weeks ago. And I'll tell you what, like, there's some special kids that volunteer to help, you know, to help the kids with special needs and makes the mama proud to have your kid out there doing that. And so he facilitates that, it's a lot of work, but...
I think it was over a hundred and ninety participants that got...
Are you in wagon thing?
What? Yeah, whatever's great.
Thank you, Mrs. Ashcraft. Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Nope. I thought, well, actually, I will say something. I thought graduation yesterday was awesome. I know the heat was terrible, I felt like toast up there, but if it wasn't for the heat, I, I loved it, I thought it was great. I mean, I think it's something that, you know, them kids will never forget, so...
Thank you, Mr. Pressler. I just wanna just follow up with all the great people that was in here tonight. I mean, you got perfect attendance, you've got drags, you've got retirees, you've got awards. You've got, Mark already said it, there's just a lot of great things going on here in Edgewood. All you gotta do is get out here and look, but that's all I have. So at this time, I'm gonna look for a motion to move to executive session.
So moved.
For the following reasons.
Oh.
To consider the appointment, dismissal, dismissal of promotion to motion or compensation to public employee or official. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
So we have two guests joining us.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, we're back from executive session, it is nine twenty-nine. Next, we have personnel items, section one, as presented. Do I have a...
So moved.
Mrs. Ashcraft, Michael Pressler, second. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Abstained.
Personnel items, section two, as presented.
So moved.
Michael Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll?
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard abstained.
Abstained. Personnel items, section three, as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Abstained.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Abstained.
This time, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt, Michael Pressler?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?